You've got mail.
Okay, call this meeting to order. Under old business, I received a quote today for a couple of trees for the park. Both of them are in the 15 gallon size and they're wrapped in a bag like what we planted the last time. And the two that I thought would work well, one is called a Schumard oak and we did plant some of those along Main Street. And the other one is a black Tupelo. Both of them are very colorful trees. So I had her put a hold on one of each of those for the park. This could be purchased out of the community foundation grant funds that purchased the fence and the playground refurbishment. So I would ask tonight that you would approve those purchases if I can get a motion and a second on that.
I'll make a motion. Let me move forward with purchasing the trees for the park.
Okay. A second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. That's Steve. Only old business I had, I'm going to introduce this in under old business because it is a part of the purchase on 36 South Main. And this is an affidavit that our attorney has asked that we sign so that we can receive the quiet title on the property. So you can take a look at this before I sign that. We still know that we're probably in that 30 day window to get all that taken care of. Last meeting, we approved the purchase agreement. So if you can take a look at that and approve this, then we'll have Nick go ahead and move forward.
Okay. Under your old business, I seen that the playground equipment was in. I had a lady stopping today that was down there. Do you know when that might be put in or?
I don't. It just came in the other day. So I don't know. It would be nice. It is, the park has been used.
Yeah, yeah. And I told her it was in. I didn't know when they was going to be able to get it put in.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that being checked by us?
Kathy, passenger car plate 119.
Is this Mary Irene? Is that Mrs. Orgeron or Jerry's voter?
That would be Irene Worth. Is that what it is?
Mary Irene Hodge.
Oh, Hodge, I'm sorry.
That was the last one.
Yeah. That would be the granddaughter. Yes. That had the last ownership and she passed away a few years ago.
Okay, she is the one who did that.
Yes. So if I get a motion for signing the affidavit for the quiet title?
I make a motion. Let me approve of the affidavit for getting the quiet title.
Second?
Aye, second the motion.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any other old business? New business, Kathy received a quote today for snow plowing for this winter. Do you just want to talk about that?
Yes. We got it from P and B Lawn and Landscape, which does all of our mowing. And they've done the snow removal for the last two years. They did raise it $50, but I didn't think that was really out of line considering we kind of added on the firehouse to begin with from the original quote. And at the time, I don't think they really knew about the alleyways and they said, okay, yeah, we'll do those. So I think they just kind of relooked everything and so hopefully we won't need much of it. And they do have for three inches, start with three inches.
Okay.
That's when they would. So if you guys want to approve that, then Mike, Steve seemed to be doing a good job with the mowing and everything.
Yes, I think the mowing is fine. They do a good job.
I thought last year they did a pretty good job. Other than I heard my neighbor say something about that, the street in front of the house.
But they got us driveway, yeah.
Yeah.
And they're learning like they do anywhere.
Yeah. But that was, to me, fully in one complete, I mean.
And realistically, they could have gotten out if they had to. I mean, it wasn't that deep.
So no.
But yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we accept this bid for snow plowing for the 2020-2021 winter at $400 per plowing. So I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion. Proceed.
All those in favor of using P and B for snow plowing, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Do you want me to sign that? I happened to be up at the park the other day and we looked at those fence lines that we talked a little bit about. And that's all workable, the way we've ended up there. The waterway that is on the northeast side had thistle growing in it. So I caught P and B today when they were mowing and talked to them a little bit about that. It was suggested that we spray that waterway with 24D in the spring because of the thistle coming up in there. And then they think that we'll be fine with grasses coming back in there. We could sow some seed if we need to. But the reason it's not regularly mowed is it holds water at different times. So they're going to mow down as far as they can on it and we'll see how that goes next spring with that. It's, well, it's actually back away, there was a big tile that ran kind of catty corner through there. Well, that's a waterway now. It goes all the way out north and that's where the water problem is. Youth Association, I did talk to their representatives about the batting cages and all since they didn't have baseball or softball there this year. There wasn't really anything done to the diamonds or that batting cage area, but they have plans on remedying the weeds and the problems there in the batting cage area. Playground equipment is in, so we just need to find time to put both slides on. And then there was another little drum part of the playground equipment. But all of that is in and stored over here in the town building. So we'll try to get that in and be ready for use for the kids. I did. I think that's it. Oh, no, I do, I did ask for a quote from Priville. There's a tree on North Main Street and I think it's about 120 North Main, which, and it's on the west side. And really, it's just a tall stump that has one limb coming off of it. So it's a dead.
I think I've seen it lots here far from the church, isn't it?
It is not very far from the church and right across from there.
It looks totally dead.
The homeowner had contacted Kathy about us cutting that tree down. It is in our right of way. And so I took it upon myself to get a quote. The quote was $125 to $150 to have that taken down and removed. Now, I don't know if to wish of the board for us to do that at this time or if we would like to get an additional quote on it, but it's a pretty simple, I think, matter for Priville to take that out of there and dispose of it.
So, but we'd still end up to have the stump to have to get rid of?
We'd have a stump there, yes. And that's not crucial to get rid of it right now. Depends on what we do in the future.
In the future.
So your thoughts on that? It is a dead tree and I think it poses a.
It poses a safety issue.
Yes.
I don't think you can find anything cheaper.
Okay. So if I get a motion on that, I would proceed with him.
I make a motion to go ahead and proceed with removing the tree.
Second?
Second.
Okay. And like I said, it's a $125 to $150 range. Are you fine with that? Okay.
If that includes a cleanup, then yeah.
It should and I'll verify that that's all the cleanup and hauling away of everything, the log that's left. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That is all I have on my list. Does the board have anything to add? Kathy?
Here's Marshall, or Marshall, here's October Water and Town Balances. I got that budget today, presented today. Your approval. Oh.
Yeah.
Do you know if on that water, if TIC, did they know that part of that money was being paid from one place and another from us? Did you mention anything to them about that when you guys were talking today? Because I just sent them the balance and I don't know when the state will pay that. It's been approved, it's to be paid. I don't know when we need, or maybe I'll let them know that.
I'm thinking that the engineer had that contact. Yeah, they knew it was falling in under that grant.
Okay.
For that.
I mean, everything's been put through, it's just, I don't know how quick.
What is Ampston Corporation that's for?
It's our annual support for the water billing program.
Any initial?
Yes.
For initials?
Yeah.
Yeah, on the town and the water bill.
So do we get the clip valve app working?
It's there. I really haven't anything with it. I mean.
We're still waiting for training.
No, I, he got, I got trained on it.
Oh, did he?
There's, we've got so many meters that now they aren't reading and.
So it's like you have to carry.
I don't have anybody really losing any water and, you know, to prove a leak that they're, I mean, we got leaks, but nobody to actually. Eventually, it's going to go to that all the way around. That's why they had, I had to down load that app.
Right.
So down the road.
I didn't know if you were trying it out or not to see, play with it to get familiar with it.
I really haven't had the time because he just got me trained on it. So I thought that'd be a cold winter project to play with. Eventually, he said that they will do it, that big handheld that I have and it'll go to like iPad, iPhone. I said, might be an iPad easier to read and everything. So down the road, we'll have to look at purchasing that, but not right now.
Okay. Did he, did you look at the history of somebody's meter?
Yes, yes. And I forget who it was. He showed me and yeah, you could see how it works. Oh, it might have been mine because I had left my SoCo's on one night and it showed it went up and then down and went up again and you could tell what was going on.
Okay.
So yeah, I thought, I was impressed with it.
Good.
This is the monthly adjustments.
Yeah.
The monthly adjustments on the water account that we adjusted.
All those longer just add.
You just need to.
Yeah, just for its initial.
Yeah.
We're slackers today. Sorry.
Do you keep a track of how much water the lot's used? How much? Aliphagous?
No, no, we're not able to. Other than we can look at the master meter out the pump house and we would know comparing what is billed compared to what is used. That we would know. Yeah.
As a loss in.
Okay.
But there's no guarantee that they're using all of that either because we do have people that have leaks. We have one right now that's had a leak for a couple of months, but they're waiting on Ronnie because they found there just right up time to happen up there. We have one that they don't want to do anything about their leak, so they're paying astronomical bill every month. You know, so there's a leak that goes on. I mean, we're talking 20,000 gallons a month. So, you know, and then now today, I have one that he's got 14,000 gallons a month, so he's got to wait and see what he's got going on. So we don't know exactly that it's all Ronnie, you know.
Yeah.
And then here is what we did show for our usage.
I know they use a lot of it when they put in that.
Right, right, right. And they said.
High lines of likely as far as water.
So, and that's been leaking out there for a while, so.
Yeah. It's just easier for them to get in and get out.
Yeah, that one, yeah. That's been a major overtaking out there. So it wasn't too terribly bad considering.
That's what I was looking at the date on there that we were talking.
Because the top is when we were still messing with filling that water tower.
Yeah. 26th and 27th.
See, I wonder if that's when we kind of got into it. How long's Ronnie been out there?
I don't know, but he had to flush that line.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's what.
That was last week. Okay, everybody kept asking.
Yeah.
Always asking.
That's true. Okay, that's the dates that we see. And it's not a huge amount because he had that hydrant dialed down. And so what looked like a lot of water really wasn't.
Well, that was going to run overnight, so you'd have it the next day too.
Is that line completed out there now?
It is, other than he has one, one more connection to make, but the line is active, the four inch new main and the service lines are in, other than one. And I don't know which one hasn't been connected.
And does the houses have water?
Oh, yes. They've had water all along through a temporary line.
And then Jason sent me an email that they're getting ready for an audit. And so he said, Pred, these aren't going to give them all to you? I don't know what he, he says that we have to take care of part of it.
I told him to give it to you.
That's all I got. Was those?
Yeah.
So maybe Tom then? Well, he said we have to go around and we'll have to.
There has to be some testing, hydrant flow test.
Well, he's got to have something that's all of the new hydrants and. Maybe we'll know Jason. Maybe we can get Jason one day, then we'll sit down and.
They're going back through the ISO rating. They have requested that we get it. It was five years ago that we had it. And now that we're up and running with the new hydrant, the new main, the new hydrants and the tower that's there and the valving. We're going to go back through that and see if we can drop our rating, which will help your insurance, help the homeowner's insurance.
And then I heard back from Ben this afternoon late. It's going to be right around $900 for the new guts for that meter out there. And he said they do have it. He went and checked to see. So he's going to get with Brian and.
Okay. Got something?
And see what they do.
It's not just the external piece, it's the internal?
He just said the guts. And so, because he said it would be, I guess, replacing like we do a regular meter. And because he said that it's not reading what is flowing through the water. So he wants to know whether we want to put our reader back on that we have and continue our numbers or if we want to put a new one on and start with zero.
And you're talking about what, from our water use overall?
Out of the big pump house.
Oh, out of the big pump house.
All pump to town. Or actual, what we go off of.
Right.
So do you want to?
Does it matter on where it is or doesn't?
Cost wise, does it matter?
No, it's going to cost the same. I asked that question. It's just whether we want to start with zero, start over, if we want to continue our numbers.
Do you have a preference?
It doesn't matter to me. I didn't know it mattered to anybody.
Doesn't matter to me.
Doesn't matter to me. Zero's fine?
Zero's fine. It's brand new and that was.
They always have a record of what it is.
Right, and that's what I thought. We're always going to have a record. And then he's going to see who's going to be here the soonest and they want to have Tom here when they do it.
Okay.
And Tom had said, that's fine. So once they contact me, then I'll contact him and make arrangements.
Did you call Tom this morning?
I've talked to him.
I talked to him.
Well, he, yeah, because he went out there last night and I didn't think about you going. So I'll, yeah, I'll let him know that, because it'll come and we just have to make a decision at the time which one to put back on. So.
This ISO paperwork, this flow test, it may be something that we need Ronnie Black to come in and do that.
That's what I was wondering.
Because we don't have the equipment to do a flow test like they're asking here and he probably does. So I will definitely reach out to him and see what kind of cost that is. I think there's three points that they have to, three different locations that they have to test.
That's what he said?
Yeah.
Just where the A that they're coming, he said.
Okay. So I will, I'll reach out to Ronnie and see if we can.
And then also, I don't think you had that, wanted to let you guys know that the Marshall Forever Fund, we've gotten another check from them for $1,500. And that is who has pretty much been donating the money for all of the decorations up at the arch that's supplied to, I mean, to get those flowers and everything that we've done for the fall. And we are looking now into Christmas stuff. And so Karen has been very easy, you know, with that and appreciative of all the work that we've done to keep that pretty. So many compliments and everything and so.
Well, those compliments go to you, Kathy.
Well, Jason's watered them and so, but.
Yeah, it is nice. Darla, Darla and her grandkids.
Yeah, they've lasted, surprisingly very, yeah, they've done excellent. So, and in the conversation, when she brought me that check the other day, next year is going to be the 100th anniversary. She was wondering to put some thought into maybe all of us getting together and doing some type of a celebration.
For the arch.
For the arch. So we might keep that in the back of our minds for next spring. So.
Because when would that be? The 100th?
Yeah.
In spring?
I don't know what the date of that was erected.
Yeah, she didn't know the actual date.
But it was 1921, I knew that.
At the time that she was talking to me, she said, but. So we keep that in the back of our minds. Other than that, I think that's all I have.
Jeff? Anything? Anybody?
Yeah. Okay, so my waterway down here, my lots, whatever. The drainage on that lot is not adequate. I said that last time I was here and I was a little bit partial. The drainage is not adequate. It needs to be made adequate. Is that something that the town can do, will do, or is that something that I need to look into? What are the options here?
And you're talking about the lot in general?
Yes, it's wet. The property's always wet because there's no drainage.
Right.
It can't drain down the street because it goes down, goes up in the road and then in the next yard over, the grade goes back up before it goes back down. Water flows downhill. It needs to be, a tile needs to be put in or the ditch needs to be fixed. Something needs to be done. I thought I had expressed myself last time, but that was my concern and I wanted to get that fixed before I put all the work into cleaning that lot. I thought I expressed myself in that it is my desire to clean up the lot. It is my intent to clean up the lot. It will be cleaned up. So the drainage is an issue, has been an issue, always has been an issue. Is there anything the town can do to fix that or is that something that I should look into hiring a contractor to fix my property? I'm trying to figure out where we stand there.
Does the water drain under that, onto your ditch? I thought it did. I didn't know how far it went.
Yeah, until we've been on it.
Okay.
I cleaned that ditch out and lowered it two foot.
Okay.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter how low you have it right there where it comes out. It goes back uphill halfway through the yard and then goes back down. And that's.
I dug that some of it down two foot.
Okay, well, that's fine. I'm not saying you've done anything wrong. I'm just saying, I'm just stating the fact, the lot does not drain.
If the town ditch needs to be reestablished, I mean, it needs to be reestablished.
Well, is the ground swampy in the middle or at the edges where?
It is always swampy. Always.
So it's not getting down to that ditch?
Outside and when it is just absolute bone dry, if I drive my mower in that yard, it tracks.
So there must be some kind of a tile on that? Probably a drainage tile that used to be there.
In the yard, it's wet?
It's always wet.
Well, that sounds like his problem. That's what our problem was, across on a property that wasn't ours that was wet and we took and got permission from the owner and we dug it up and put tile down so that you and I were drained.
Tom, I did that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, in my opinion.
So if it's up in the yard, then it was our, because our problem at our house, there was a problem, but yet it was a problem out there too because the tile had collapsed.
And that's what's probably, well.
So if it's, so if that's the case, if it's in your yard, it might be too that if it's draining or it pisses.
If you're getting your water to the ditch.
Yeah.
And it's not moving, then that would be a town issue to address. If you're, if you're ponding water in your lot, in other words, it's not flowing into that.
Well, it ends on the right leg.
And it doesn't, I mean, that ditch on the north side was cleaned out. I did that as requested.
You drug mud down to the low spot and there's piles of mud right there where the water's supposed to flow through.
Well, the only thing that was dragged down there were weeds. That's what was brought down there. So I don't know where the.
Root balls, root balls that had mud and it's still sitting there. It's still sitting there.
I have checked on that a couple of times and there's nothing to prevent the water from getting in to that tile that goes under the road. I'm not saying it flows. I'm just saying there's nothing to prevent it from getting to that point. My, my response is if you are having water issues in the middle of. My response is if you are having water issues in the middle of your yard and it's not getting to the ditch, then that's a homeowner responsibility. If it is getting to the ditch and not flowing, then it would be something the town would need to address. So I'm not sure which way it's going right now. I don't know if it's a tile that's broke in your property or it is flowing towards the ditch. I don't know that.
Well, you've been there and you worked on it. What's your idea?
I did not go into your lot. I only worked on that ditch.
So where you worked on it is the town property?
I don't have a survey to know exactly where it's at, but I assumed it was probably the town property. That's an assumption that I made, but I cleaned that up to help you with the mowing. I did not go onto your property and what you're saying is somewhere on that piece of property, you're getting water standing. Is that correct?
No, I'm not saying, I did not say standing water. I said it's always wet. The ground is wet, it's saturated, it doesn't drain very well.
Right.
Because it does not have proper flow to a drain. The groundwater underneath cannot drink.
Well, that's the whole town and Marshall.
Is there a spot in the yard, like when it was really dry and you said it would track? Did you notice, is there an area that tracked heavier than...
Yeah, right down there by that ditch.
Just by the ditch?
Yeah.
The rest of the yard wasn't?
Yeah, the further you get, further away is the ditch you get, the drier it gets.
The drier it gets, okay.
It's down there and do I need to go take some pictures or something? I mean, what do I need to do here? I understand I'm about to get written up and Ronnie getting things cleaned up. I would like whatever the ordinance is in writing so I can know if something's been sent out, I apologize, I missed it, but if you're going to write me up, please give me the rules. And also, you know, this is, water flows downhill.
Right.
Flows down the road. There's a ditch. The ditch goes like this. Groundwater underneath cannot flow down that way to drain that property, so it is a pain to clean up. If I take equipment out there to clean it up, it is going to run stuff up, it's going to make a mess.
And it might cause problems for the neighbors because you're going to have too much going.
I think we understand the flow of water. I don't need a lesson on that. What I'm saying is if your problem is in the center of your lot, that is not the ditch at the end because the water's not getting there. If the water is filling that ditch up and holding water, then that's a different issue. And since I didn't trespass on your lot to find out where the wet spot is, I have no idea. But I did call you and tell you I cleaned that ditch and I cleaned that side where they had put some piles of dirt so it would flow. So beyond that, I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay.
Would there be possible any other tiles that we don't know about that's right there a little close to that ditch that could have tied in?
It would be property owners' tiles. We don't own any tiles across...
Because I was wondering if there's another tile that was probably close to right there that's maybe...
I think all that was farmland at one time. It was probably clay tile. I think Chuck, your property probably was clay tile, farmland.
Yep, or probably have it there.
So I have no idea about tiles through there. I know that, from what I'm told, we don't own any tile in that area.
The only problem I had or seen was just the ditch area, but then, I understand what you're saying was that, but the two big grown-up spots out there...
It's all going to get cleaned up.
Well, I'm just...
It's all, I've told you that, it's on the list, it's going to get done. So I came here to reiterate that, just to make sure everybody hears it said, that it will be cleaned up. And if I get written up in some type of an ordinance, I want the ordinance that I'm being written up as because as of now, I haven't seen anything, any rules that I need to follow. So that's all I'm asking for. You do what you got to do, but that's all I'm asking.
If it goes under the road, it makes it that far and then there's hydrant, right, it can't go any farther. It's not like something, it's not like it needs to be reestablished a bit.
But that would have the water pedal in front of his high property then? So there's a water pedal in front of his high property?
This is not...
I don't know where this problem is, but I'm sure there's something to be done.
Okay, my, no, my question that I ask is, is the town done cleaning in the ditch area? Have you guys done what you're going to do? Yes or no, so I can know when I perceive that I'm not going to mess anything up that anybody else is going to do?
Well, this is the first instance I knew that that was your issue. I didn't understand.
You actually had this conversation back in January where the water was running down the road.
Let me finish, please. The issue, when we talked about it before, was the ditch that runs east to west and we had that cleaned out because it was ponding there, running down the road. That was the issue that I went down and I told you I would clean up. I took the town tractor and I cleaned that up. Beyond that, you're putting a different problem out there that I'm not aware of.
It's related to that. In that it is...
Very, very good.
...out there, that's part of it and it does not have a clear path to a ditch. So all I am simply asking, I'm just asking for a yes or no answer. Have you done what you're going to do, yes or no?
I have done what I promised you I'd do at that meeting. I will tell you that. I don't know about the other part, what you're talking about. I don't know if you're talking about the west end of your property, the north side of, I don't know where you're talking. So I guess maybe we need to look at that.
Okay.
So I know what you're explaining. But I'm saying if you're having ponding in the middle, and you don't like the word ponding, but if you have water being held up there, then it's not draining or it would be standing water there at the road and there at the ditch. That's, that's what I'm saying. So I don't know whether you're getting that or not.
What is it exactly that you're wanting me to get? I'm sorry.
I'm saying I don't know whether you're getting ponding water at the ditch.
I'm not getting ponding water. I'm talking about surface standing water. I'm talking about soil that holds moisture because it does not have an adequate grade to drain the water away from. That's what I'm talking about.
Okay. Well, if the soil is not percolating or moving water or the tile, if there is a tile, then that would be a homeowner issue. If that water is getting to the natural drainage and it is stopping the flow there, then that would be something the town would look at.
Okay, my biggest problem is in the part of the ditch there, from the original conversation, that's the wettest part of the yard. I can mow everything right up to that. That's why the rest of it's real tall because when it gets wet, that's too wet to get the mower across from the ditch where the drain comes out all the way down to the fire engine at the corner. That whole spot that you scraped is, that's the part that's wet. And this is constantly, I'm not saying since you did anything or since this person did it, I'm not pointing you blind. I'm just simply stating the fact that that's always wet and it needs to be taken care of. So I'm just asking, is that, is what you've done, what you've done, do you consider that adequate? Because quite frankly, I don't. It didn't fix the problem, so something else needs to be done.
As I stated, I did what I told you we would do to clean that ditch where the weeds were tall. I wasn't aware that you had asked for that whole ditch to be cleaned out all the way to the corner and then opened up.
Well, I'm glad this is being recorded because I, that's explicitly what I said in that the problem goes all the way down to the ditch.
That is what you just said, correct?
That's what I said in January.
Well, that's not what I heard.
Well, I'm glad this is, I like the recording here.
Can we go look at it?
Sure.
Can we check it out?
Yeah.
Can we, when you're at home, send it back and we can see?
Do you mind if we walk on that property?
You guys can walk and call that property anytime you want. I don't care. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. We will take a look at it?
I don't, I don't live there, but you guys have my phone numbers, you guys have my number. It's not, I'm already able to, if you need me, call me. I don't, I don't have an issue with you guys doing whatever you have to do. I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just frustrated because I had a pretty long day and I was looking forward to be home with my kids tonight instead of coming down here to talk about this again. My other frustration here is if I am going to be written up for some type of ordinance, I would like to see said ordinance that I need written up or, or any other ordinance that I need to be following as far as that goes. I think it's pretty fair to say, you know, that needs to be...
All you have to do is request and we will be glad to provide you with a copy of that.
That'd be awesome. I'd love to have that. I can go ahead and bring it up at the next meeting if I have to.
Kathy can make that, can print that off?
I think Kathy, I don't have it.
Okay.
I'll get you a copy of it.
I was going to say, do you have it? Because I don't have one.
They'll go get it to me. That's not a problem. I've got the actual ordinance violation form, but yes, I mean, all we were asking for is cooperation. I...
You're not writing anybody up right now, are you?
Well, we had talked about that, but I got hung up on it. So I understand you're frustrated, but I was absolutely as polite as I could be, so I understand you're frustrated and I have no intention to write anybody up, I just wanted to cooperate, but I just, so yes, if we go to write you up, which they're going to take a look at it and see, I imagine, imagine Ronnie would have to go that route, but I will get you a copy of that anyway, definitely you know exactly what's going on.
Well, you guys do what you gotta do, it's fine. We're dormant. I think, quite frankly, Emily was dormant, I wasn't. That's not real high on my priority list. You know, it will be cleaned up, so we'll say again, it will be cleaned up, the whole lot will be cleaned up. It's going to get done. It's about like my drive where I had to do a bunch of work to my drive and we had to walk the freaking mailbox for about two months while I was waiting on the money to get the rock to fix the drive. This is the same thing. It's not going to be free to clean that up. I am saving the money so I can clean it. Sorry if I seem frustrated by Jim was not planning on coming down here tonight. I apologize that I'm coming off as a jerk.
I understand.
I'll do that, but...
It's all right.
Anything else?
Yeah. All for the newspaper.
Yeah. It won't be bad.
Jeff.
Jeff, J E F. Nothing like this.
Anything else, Jeff?
I think that that was it.
Okay. Jeff, do you have anything?
Nope.
Okay. Nothing further. We'll stand adjourned.